Good morning. Today is regular meeting of Commissioners Court. The date is Wednesday, the 12th of August. The time is 9:00 a.m. We're at 114 West Buffington Avenue, Anderson, Texas. Calling the meeting to order, I'd ask and invite you to stand for the invocation. Pledge to the U.S. and the Texas flag. Father, we come to you this day giving thanks for all that we have, for the opportunities you give us, for the blessings of this life. They are many, Father, and we're grateful for that. We're grateful for the country that we live in, the state that we live in, and the county and communities that we live in. We ask, Father, that you watch over this court, that we make good decisions that are solid, that are mindful of all of the citizens of this great county in Texas. Father, give us comfort and peace through this time of pandemic and the struggle that we have with it. For those that have lost loved ones, we're feeling for them and they're in our hearts. For those that are suffering with the illness, Father, we pray for their quick recovery. And, Father, we just ask that you let some of the fear that we may have, the anxiety that we may have over this pandemic, we cast our prayers to you and you help lighten our load. Father, we thank you for your son and it's in his precious name, Jesus Christ, our Lord and Savior. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. Would you be seated, please? Madam County Clerk, do we have any public comments that you're aware of?
No, sir.
Commissioners, any public comments that you want to make?
I have one. We're having a blood drive at St. Mary's Catholic Church Sunday morning from 8 until 1 o'clock. There will be a light breakfast served along with that to those who give blood.
Okay. Blood drive at St. Mary's. Yes, ma'am.
This is the last day for testing?
Today is the last day for free COVID testing at the Progressive Center in Navasota and at Anderson City Hall, previously American Legion Hall in Anderson, Texas. That's from 8 to 4 o'clock. And if somebody is in line at 4 o'clock and there's a line to be done, they'll make sure everybody gets tested.
And it's not painful?
No, it's not the nasal test. It's an oral test. So only one slight gag and that's it. I know, I did it. Are there any other comments? With none other, we'll go to consent agenda items number 3, 4, 5, and 6. Number 3, consider and take action to approve the treasurer's list of claims that's been provided to each of us. Consider and take action to approve payroll. That was Agenda Item 4. Agenda item number 5, approve monthly reports submitted by the county treasurer for June 2020 and authorize and advertise affidavit of same in accordance with local government code 114.026. See page 4 of this agenda. And Agenda Item number 6, receive and approve the Grimes County Second Quarter Investment Report for the period ending June 30. See page 5 of this agenda. If there are no questions or comments, I move to approve consent agenda items 3, 4, 5, and 6 as presented.
Second.
There's a motion before the court on consent agenda items number 3, 4, 5, and 6 by Commissioner Mallett, seconded by Commissioner Dobianski. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose? That motion carries. Agenda item number 7, consider and take action to approve the Economic Development Services Agreement between Grimes County and the Navasota- Grimes County Chamber of Commerce for 2024, the 2021 fiscal year. That's October 1/20 through September 30 of '21, and authorize the county judge as signatory. It's our attachment number 7. There are no changes other than the date changes from last year's agreement, Commissioners.
Are there any questions? If not, I'll make the motion to approve the Economic Development Services Agreement between Grimes County and the Navasota- Grimes County Chamber of Commerce for the 2020-2021 fiscal year.
Is there a second? There's a motion before the court on Agenda Item Number 7 by Commissioner Walker, seconded by Commissioner Cox. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose? That motion carries. We will now go to Agenda Item Number 8. Mr. Al Piler, update on the ongoing projects. Grimes County Courthouse, Grimes County Jail, Grimes County Justice Center. Good morning.
Good morning. Grimes County Courthouse plaster started to uncomfortability is now upon us when plaster dust is everywhere. Moving along, Grimes County Jail, we should start the control system later this month. The Justice Center, the decking has put on. The forms for the mezzanines have been put up. We're waiting to make entry holes for all things running up through the mezzanine. And that's what's going to involve for the mezzanine. Any questions?
Okay, we've had pretty good weather for it to continue.
Yes, sir.
All right. Sounds good. Oh, would you like to go ahead and report on number 9 then? Discuss and take action on- Commissioners, did y'all have anything else on 8? Hearing none, we'll go to Agenda Item Number 9. Discuss and take action on new propane agreement. That's our attachment number 9. Well done, Mr. Piler, but go ahead and tell the court what you've done.
All this is, is the same agreement that we had with JB Propane. As you can see, it's pretty solid. It was 105 last year. It's 107 this year.
So he got the best of you on this negotiation?
Almost.
But I tell you, I wish I could get mine for 107.
There's a lot of people that like that number, so. And that's throughout the county. It's just not- I mean, if we have someone that's not on this agreement, he will honor it as long as it's part of Grimes County. No, Grimes County. Grimes County government.
Is there enough other questions? Can I make the motion that we approve the new propane agreement?
Second.
There's a motion before the court on Agenda Item Number 9 by Commissioner- I'm sorry. Yes, by Commissioner Walker, seconded by Commissioner Dobianski. Is there further discussion? Commissioner Cox, did you get your answer?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. We'll go. Thank you. We will go to Agenda Item Number 10. Grimes County IT Director Greg Cannon, discuss and take action to allow IT to proceed with single sourcing the telephone and data network bid on purchase and installation in the Justice Center. That will be our attachment number 10. Mr. Cannon?
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. My name is Greg Cannon. I'm the director of IT for the Grimes County. And I'm seeking requests from the court to single source the data and telephone systems for the new Justice Center. We're talking approximately $250,000 for parts and labor. And the reason behind this, and I've spoken with the auditor's office as well as John Foltz, our county attorney, to get insight as to what the court can allow. And our county attorney may want to speak to this more in detail, but the gist that I got is that the court can approve a single source. I'm fine either way. If we want to put it out for bid, but my biggest concern, and I tried to explain to the auditors and to John, is it's- when you're talking about the data and phone network, it's not like we're building a building and we come in and we put trees and grass or electrical. All that can be done while you're still in another building. But when we're talking about- the county's not going to shut down while we migrate phone systems and data systems. We're actually having to migrate a live environment and everything's got to stay up here in that period. So it becomes very difficult in working with vendors to make that happen in real time. The reason that we're requesting to single source with the vendor that are chosen is Enterprise is because Enterprise is the company that currently handles our existing phone system. And we're going from a very old digital system to a new voice-over IP system. And that transition's got to happen smoothly or we could be without phones for, you know, several days, if not a week or longer. So it's critical because we're moving a live system that's trying to- I envision it like trying to do open-heart surgery on a baby in the womb. You know, you've got to be very careful how we do this where we could have major outages that affect dispatch, 911, et cetera. There are some provisions in the bid that we've gotten from Enterprise that allow us to save money because of the the system we have right now to record all officers' calls that come into the building is called Telstrat. That system is very outdated. We've been trying to upgrade it for two years, but the cost is too expensive. Well, part of this service with Enterprise, the system they're put in would help us forego that $20,000 cost that would be required if we went with some other vendor. Their system includes that as part of the complete solution. So if we choose a different solution, we're going to have to update Telstrat outside of that solution. So there are some cost savings by working with this vendor because they put in the Telstrat system. They know how to upgrade it. They're a preferred vendor with Telstrat. So there's lots of advantages. We're going that way. Like I said, personally, I have no qualms in taking out the hardware for bid. My biggest concern that I want to try to relate to the court is that we need to make real sure of the vendor we choose to help do the installation migration. That's the critical piece that we're about major outages.
But your recommendation would be to take this bid from Enterprise?
Yes. I've looked at the cost. I feel that Enterprise is always- they're a current provider and vendor for us today. Back several years before I was here, there was a discussion of replacing the phone system. And I think CenturyLink and several other companies came in and said, "Your system is unreparable. It's going to cost hundreds of thousands of dollars to repair."
Like $212,000 to be kind of almost exact.
Enterprise came in and was able to replace a part, I think, for around $100. And it got the system up. So I think they've always had the best interest for the county. We've worked with them on many phone issues, network issues over the last three years that I've been here. They've always gone the extra mile. I've always checked their pricing. It's always within industry norms or even less. So I have no concerns about using them as a vendor.
May I ask why is the Navasota Annex and the probation department, are we going with the new system or something over there?
The new phone system will incorporate all the offices so that, much like today, the adult probation and the annex, the JP3 annex, is it's not on the same system, but they've got the systems tied together so that if you want to call HR, you just pick up a dollar four-digit extension. We'll have that same functionality, but it won't be on this similar system. It'll all be one system.
So this is to put us all on this same exact system, so. Okay. I can remember probation had different numbers, so. Does that include there, when you say Navasota Annex, does it include the ag extension is what I'm trying to say?
It'll include the juvenile probation, the commissioner's office, everything in the JP3 annex, the JP3 office, as well as adult probation when they move from their current location to the, I think, the building which will reside here. So it will include this?
Oh, yes, sir. Do I dare ask our county attorney? Any guidance?
Your county attorney's office operates in a-
Best entrance of the court.
Discussion about a world of risk. If you choose, if you fail to go out for bids for something that's required to be subjected to bids, the people that go to jail are you. The people that the taxpayer could invalidate the deal if they try, if they choose to do that. They could seek injunction to stop this from happening. Could be a real mess. So, and I've had this conversation with Greg. He knows that I've never intentionally tried to be an obstructionist. I'm warning you about the risk and it's up to you to decide. The question is, does this expense or expenditure fall within the discretionary exemption laundry list of things that could be exempt? And in talking with the auditor's office and also talking with Greg, the two we look at, this is 262.024 Local Government Code, an item necessary to preserve or protect the public health or safety of the residents of the county. I don't know. You have to answer that for yourself. There's one that talks about public calamity. I don't think that that necessarily is it. An item necessary because of unforeseen damage. I don't think that's it. And the one that Greg is, I think, and he and I talked about this. He said if we didn't, he's put on the agenda item, I think, language that speaks to this exemption, an item that can be obtained from only one source, including, and then there's an A, B, C, and D, items for which competition is precluded because of the existence of patents, copyrights, secret processes, or monopolies. I don't think that's it. Films, manuscripts, or books, obviously not that it. That's not it. Electric, power, gas, water, other utility services. I don't know if this is necessarily a utility, but maybe that's the one. And then finally, captive replacement parts or component parts for equipment. And maybe that's it. What I'm saying, and you all have heard me say this before and we're limited on time, but I'm going to say it as quickly as I can. When you're going to spend more than $50,000, you better be darn confident that something falls within discretionary exemption. And if it doesn't, you have to ask yourself, what's the harm for going out for- with going out for bids? If Enterprise gives us a bid and then we get one or two, or zero others, then you've got no real risk. The downside of the risk is very, very low. If you choose something and somebody believes that it's a gotcha moment, then maybe you found yourself in a circumstance where you didn't intend to be. I get that we want these folks and we've had a good relationship with them, but what remains is the question of how to spend taxpayer dollars. These aren't your dollars. You asserted yourself to be a fiduciary and to be the best fiduciary for the job when you ran for the position. You're saying to the taxpayer, "I'm going to use your dollars the best way I know how and I'm going to make darn sure we're getting a good deal." Greg may very well look at this and shop this till he's blue in the face, but there is the possibility if you subject it to bid, somebody comes in and they say, "Look, it's going to be a pain in the butt, but we think we can do better than Enterprise. We're coming in at $100,000." Then you're going to have to answer the people why you blew another $150,000. Maybe nobody else comes in. And it may be that Enterprise is the best. At the end of the day, with competitive bid, you get to choose lowest and best, not just lowest. So going out for bids is a two-week, or two, or three, or four-week process. And the question is, do we have that to give? If you do, what risk are you willing to take? Greg would have to write the scope of the bid, but I think he could probably write it along the scope of the things that Enterprise has suggested are necessary here. So I told Greg that I'd be happy to say the same thing that I said to him today at court. Effectively, that's what I've done. It's up to you all to decide whether or not you want to assert this is discretionary exemption circumstance and you're going to go with any bids that's on the table or are you going to say, "Let's just go out for bids." If we got the time, what's the downside to it? That's for you all to decide.
I'm going to make a motion because we have the time to go out for bids that we do indeed go out for bids. So Greg, I would ask that you submit that if the court approves that.
Okay.
But if that's the case, then we would-
Also, I think you can set up the bid to where, you know, the smooth transition and maintain, you know, that to be part of the bid as well.
Has to be an absolute requirement. And one of the issues with that, it's not like we're going to shut down facilities on Monday and everybody's going to be over there working on Tuesday. It's going to be a department by department by department. So it's going to be a process over a period of time. So, Court, my recommendation would be that we ask Greg to go out for bids. That's kind of a precaution for us. But also with what Mr. Foltz has shared, I think it's, since we do have the time, let's go ahead and do this. All right?
I'll second the motion.
Any further discussion? There's a motion before the court on Agenda Item Number 10 by Judge Fowth, seconded by Commissioner Dobianski. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. So Greg, if you would get started on that right away with everything else you have to do.
All right, thank you.
Go to Agenda Item Number 11. Grimes County Commission Precinct Board, Philip Cox, discuss and take action to approve the application for County Feral Hog Abatement Grant for Grimes County. That's our attachment number 11. I'm all in favor of this and then start at my house. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Not real sure what the outline of what the program is. It's attached in your package. It's an agri-life extension wildlife services program through the Texas Legislature that provides grant money for feral hog abatement. I have spoken and been in conversation with the ag extension officer here, Coleman, and he indicated that he is willing to process the application and organize the program and keep the reporting requirements for the program. And it's also a strategic- part of the strategic plan. I don't want a strategic plan to do something, if possible, with the hog problem. So it's no cost to the county and there's $100,000, I believe, is the amount of the funds that will be distributed. And I'm not saying Grimes County is going to get all those funds. It's obviously based on how much they were awarded based on the program estimate. But I would recommend that we at least put in for some grant funding.
Well, at a dollar a hog, we ought to get the $400,000, Commissioner.
Well, you know, every little bit helps.
Yeah, right. So what would be the process just to fill out the application? Is that something that you can handle for the county?
Yes, I'll take care of it. I'll get with Mr. Holman actually. He will do all that. He's got program parameters and indicates he'll be in charge of reporting.
That being the case, I make a motion that we approve Commissioner Cox to proceed with this feral hog abatement grant for Grimes County. There's a motion before the court on Agenda Item Number 11 by County Judge Joe Fowth, seconded by Commissioner Walker. And is there any discussion? I hope this works. All in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you, sir. Agenda Item Number 12, road and bridge engineer Harry Walker, consideration and possible approval of replat of King Oak Section 2, lots 2.0, lots 256 and 257, which was tabled during the August 5, 2020 Commissioner's Court meeting. We did have a public hearing on that this morning. We had no protest to that. So Mr. Walker?
Nothing having changed in the last 30 minutes. I'm recommending approval of this replat.
I move to approve the replat of King Oak Section 2 as presented.
Second.
Motion before the court on Agenda Item Number 12 by Commissioner Mallett, seconded by Commissioner Dobianski. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Do you want to give us a summarizing road and bridge report, sir?
I should finish up the paving program this week and we should have the new bridge on 201 open this week. Any other questions?
I'm good. About our? Thank you. Commissioner Walker, this needs to go to Commissioner Cox. He needs two signatures. No, just Commissioner needs two signatures. You're good. He needs to do that one and the last page of that one. All right, we will go to Agenda Item Number 13. Consider and take action to establish the salary expenses and other allowances of elected officials or precinct officers according to Local Government Code. There was no change in those expenses, so there's nothing for us to really vote on. Everyone got their notices, I believe? We'll go to Agenda Item 14. Discuss and take action on items related to the coronavirus relief fund. MJ, are you out there?
Let me go get her.
Well, I can ask Mary Nichols, is there anything that you know that we need to report on that?
Nothing other than you and-
Previous discussion?
Yeah, and y'all had a meeting with the ISDs.
All right. Commissioners, we did have on Monday evening at 4:30 a meeting with all four of the ISDs within Grimes County. We told them of our situation, the money that we had been allotted in the categories 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, and 6, and that we were indeed interested in helping them in categories 1, 2, and 3. And if they'd had any expenditures in that area to submit that- go ahead and MJ. And submit those to Mary Johnson in the auditor's office and she'd keep a tabulation for that. And we kind of somewhat came to the unofficial agreement they would submit their request to us versus going out and spending first and then submitting the receipts to us. And I told them we were concerned because if they thought it was in 1, 2, and 3 and it wasn't, then somebody's going to have to pay it back. And initially, it's coming out of our funds, our county funds. So they were in agreement and you got your first request this morning from one of the ISDs. But is there anything in general that you want to tell us quickly?
We basically said, "Put together a list of your needs and get them to us in a week. What are your immediate needs?" And then we will come back in October and revisit again to see if there's anything that we could get in between the December deadline. But they needed to get open and their needs may change. So we said, "See what you need now and let's revisit it again in October."
Very good. Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
Do we have an upcoming meeting?
Ma'am?
Do we have an upcoming budget?
We don't have a specific date.
Nothing Monday.
Nothing Monday for what?
Obviously.
Okay. Thank you, MJ. Discuss and consider and take action regarding the burn ban and authorize the county judge as signatory. I got comments again from two resources that said they don't anticipate having one. I know Brazos County, what did, do you have any updated information, David?
Yes, sir. I reached out to the chiefs last night, did a telephone poll and was able to reach all the chiefs. It was about evenly split. A couple of chiefs said they could go either way on it, but they do see some value in having a burn ban. So, you know, it seemed like they were leaning towards, the majority were leaning towards a ban at this point. But several chiefs did say that people in their neighborhoods and their regions are doing their burns also, and that's another factor we have to consider. If we put a burn ban in place, then property owners aren't able to remove their burn piles from their property and that increases the risk cost. So it's always a balancing act.
Okay, well, you're the emergency management services coordinator. Your call. Yes or no?
In light of the fact that we have a dry cell coming in that's actually here by now and there's no rain projected, really any significant rain projected for the next week or so, I would lean towards at least for now having a burn ban.
Well, as you talked to Mitch, and I think so there's about possibly letting them finish out their control burns before we put one on. You know, I think that, you know.
Like I said, it's-
It might probably help. I mean, it's like I said, if it looks like it's something we can call emergency, you know, in two weeks.
Yeah, my concern is that if we wait until the next emergency court-
It's at the end of the month, 26.
Yes, sir.
But we can always have an emergency meeting.
So is the recommendation no action at this moment? Thank you, sir.
I will monitor it, sir. And if I feel like it's merited for next week, I'll let you know as early as possible.
Thank you. Agenda Item Number 16, receive any updates on the strategic plan, Commissioners?
Just to reiterate that we just took action with the Georgia Department of Strategic Plan on the hog mitigation. hog.
Oh, okay, thank you. Anything else? With that, agenda item number 17, is there a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
There's a motion before the court on agenda item number 17 by Commissioner Dobianski, seconded by Commissioner Walker. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye opposed? Motion carries.